Regular meeting number 53 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Faver, would you please lead us?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the right, the United States of America, and to the record, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is pleased to have Father David Shawk, pastor Christ the King Catholic Church, to pray with us. Pastor, thank you so much for being here, Father.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let us pray. Lord God, we first give you thanks for the blessing of democracy and self-government. We are grateful for the ability and responsibility to choose our political leaders, as well as the freedom to support or reject initiatives that affect our community. We ask for your continued blessings upon this privileged form of government throughout our country and in our city. And we ask you, Lord, to inspire wisdom in our current and future elected officials. Stir up in them an even greater passion for justice and give them compassionate hearts. May they be true public servants, always attentive to the common good. And we ask you, God, to pour out your blessings upon Columbus and all of its residents enlightened by you, Lord, may we live and work and play and pray in harmony with each other. We hold up to you in a particular way, all those men, women, and children who are suffering in our community because of economic hardship, or illness, or family crisis. Show them your kindness and help us to be your instruments of support to our brothers and sisters in need. Finally, Lord, we ask that you inspire all those who will participate in these proceedings this evening, so that they may do so with an open mind, a tender heart, and a spirit willing to collaborate with you, O God, and with each other. We make this prayer to you, who govern us all now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of City Council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed in the agenda and will be printed in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions from councilmembers, starting with Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Ms. Brown? Councilmember Doran? Councilmember Faver?
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight I have Resolution 0304X-2019 to recognize the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative for the work in support of Columbus residents in need of a second chance. I'd like to invite Mr. Zach Rupel and Maria Ford to the podium. The Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative is a coalition dedicated to supporting those touched by the justice system. Their network of community resource providers, justice-involved citizens, and supportive stakeholders help to ease the transition from conviction to restoration. On this Thursday, November 7th, the collaborative will host their annual signature event, the Restored Citizens Summit, at Columbus State Community College's Center for Workforce Development. Zach and Maria, the floor is yours to tell us more about the collaborative and Thursday's event.
Thank you, City Council, for this very important recognition, and thank you, Councilmember Faver, for acknowledging our work and hearing us. Eight years ago, a small group came together to put together a summit, a way to love on people who weren't feeling a lot of love. We offered them workshops, taught them how to get back to work, gave them services that otherwise they did not have. And at that time, they didn't know that, but there were people with criminal convictions on that committee. I am one of those people. So I have lived that journey and understand the hardship of being restored into the community. So again, I thank you for hearing us, because that's why we're here. We've been heard. We've been heard, and I feel like we have been able to change the way we think about people with criminal convictions, because we first see them and we've heard them. In 2012, Mayor Coleman said, "We can deal with the reentry of ex-offenders in our community in two ways. We can cast them aside into a cycle of crime and violence, or we can restore our community by restoring their lives." We can do that. We can restore our community by strengthening the lives of those who need restoring. In our outreach letter this year to our community partners, we ended it with a phrase, "Working together," or "Working to make our communities richer, stronger, and safer." And I thought about that, and I said, "Of course, we want to strive for a richer culture and a history that is all-encompassing, and yes, we want safer streets and we want jobs for everyone." Who doesn't want that? But in doing so, I think we need to achieve, we need to seek to achieve to make our communities healthy communities, because a healthy community, it's always a safe place. In a healthy communities, the values are universal and they're durable. Good jobs for everyone, available and affordable housing, educational opportunities, those are all in healthy communities, and it supports the needs of every citizen. It cares for its members, it engages them, it welcomes them. We need to cast them aside, or we can cast them aside into a cycle of crime and violence, or we can restore our community by restoring their lives. Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that we are able to do this and for hearing us.
Good evening, President Harden, Councilmember Faver, and members of the Columbus City Council. My name is Zach Rupel, and on behalf of the Restored Citizens Collaborative, thank you for this wonderful honor. According to the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, 98 percent of citizens incarcerated will be released back to the community. Last year alone, Central Ohio received over 1,600 citizens back to our community. These returning citizens represent all walks of life, all offense types, and have a wide variety of holistic needs. But what they all have in common is one thing: their time was served. While this seems like an obvious notion, it cannot be understated the extreme uphill battle many returning citizens face as they reenter society. The Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative is dedicated to ensuring every citizen who has served their time is able to meet their basic needs as they return to this community. We recognize that for someone returning to Central Ohio post-incarceration, the first few months are a critical time for establishing independence, attending to self-care, and reducing recidivism through the provision of key social supports. We also recognize that every returning citizen needs and deserves this help regardless of age, race, gender, orientation, ability, or past offense. In the same way that society as a whole is recognizing the need to move from retributive to restorative justice, our reentry agencies and organizations must dedicate themselves to operate in a manner that is inclusive to all who need help. Aiding in successful reentry for all is the most direct way our community can help reduce recidivism while demonstrating the opportunities that make this city great. We sincerely appreciate the council recognizing the work of our organization and look forward to further collaboration as we work together to create safe, supportive communities for all citizens. We will be happy to address any questions or comments you may have at this time. Thank you.
Can you talk briefly about what residents can expect from the event on Thursday?
On Thursday, we've set up several workshops for people to attend having self-care, how to access housing, resources for employment. We've also gathered together 26 resource agencies so that people will have access to resources at that time, and we have invited a keynote speaker, Ronald Simpson-Baye, who is a national speaker, who has also been incarcerated, to be able to offer some bits of encouragement and some advice to people who are entering the community. Now, we will be hosting people who are currently incarcerated, as well as people who are previously incarcerated, and they will have the same ability to access all of the services that we have available.
And where can residents learn more about the event on Thursday?
Residents can visit our website at www.CentralOhioRCC.com, as well as through various social media outlets.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. I've had the opportunity to attend a number of these conferences, and if you are someone who, as you just mentioned, are currently within the criminal justice system, or have our reentry and are back in our community, it is certainly a wonderful conference to come to, to get resources. And so if you're listening, or for family members listening, I would certainly recommend coming and receiving those services, those organizations that are there. It's an amazing event for those individuals in our community who certainly are deserving of a second and a third and a fourth chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Faver.
Well, at that point, I'd move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I would like to invite up President Nancy King and the First Ladies of the Baptist Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Alliance to the podium, as I introduce ordinance number 303X-2019. Ordinance number 303X-2019 is to recognize and celebrate the Baptist Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Alliance on its 80th anniversary. The Baptist Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Alliance was founded by Mrs. Myrtis Walker at 28 years of age. Renowned as a young woman of faith endowed with wisdom, Mrs. Walker was the wife of Reverend Lorinda Walker and the First Lady of Bethany Baptist Church in Columbus, Ohio, beginning in 1937, when Reverend Walker was called to pastor that church. First Lady Walker believed that being married to a pastor or a preacher was a pathway of service to others, thus becoming the primary reasons why she founded and organized BMWMWA. Since inception, the Baptist Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Alliance purposes, or, excuse me, its purpose has been to have a better understanding of present-day issue which affect our intellectual, moral, economic, and Christian life. The Women of BMWMWA work to further stimulate social fellowship and cooperation among churches, the ministry, and other agencies for the good of all mankind. Under the umbrella of friendship and unity, they remain steadfast in setting forth programs that will edify its members in the kingdom's work. BMWMWA also maintains a scholarship fund for college students. Each year, the organization awards eligible students scholarships to help them further their education. The scholarships are awarded at the Mini B Cleveland Scholarship and Awards Luncheon. In addition to awarding scholarship and cultivating cooperation among churches and the ministry, the Women of BMWMWA serve the Columbus community through their work organizing mission projects, prayer breakfasts, and other events to serve those in need. The Women of BMWMWA are also actively involved in the International Association of Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Incorporated, which is an organization that works to unite ministers, wives, and widows of various Christian denominations into one Christian fellowship around the world. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate the Baptist Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Alliance on its 80th anniversary. President King, the floor is yours.
Thank you to the President and all the council. We, the Baptist Ministers' Wives and Wives, are very honored that you all recognize our 80 years in service. We have the Mini B Cleveland, who is deceased, was a woman of former presidents, and also have two former presidents here today, and I'd like to introduce you to them, so you will know. But least past president is Frieda Giliard. Our meeting president after that was Helena Bush. We work very hard in the organization to help students, we also do mission, and it's very important, because we don't know what we might go through in life. So these are the things that we do to help the community and people of faith. May God bless you, and thank you so very, very much for recognizing us today, and we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate you. I'd like to ask each of you to introduce yourselves and what church you represent, if you wouldn't mind.
My name is Marquise Monroe. I'm a member of Tabernacle Baptist Church. Reverend Verlin F. Samples is my pastor. My husband is the late Reverend Dr. John L. Monroe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Toni Hicklin. I go to Spring Hill Baptist Church, and my pastor is Reverend Tommy L. Hicklin. Thank you.
Good evening. Rhonda Curtis of the Second Missionary Baptist Church Delaware, Ohio, where my husband is the pastor, Michael Arthur Curtis.
Good evening. Dawn Carter from Lincoln Park Community Baptist Church. My late husband was James A. Carter, Jr.
Good evening. Tisha Potts. My church is Adoration and Peace Baptist Church, where my husband is the pastor, Antoine S.L. Potts.
Good evening. I'm Gertrude Waller, a member of Tabernacle Baptist Church. My husband was the late Odell Waller.
Good evening. I'm Loretta Marbury. My husband is Reverend Jack R. Marbury, pastor of Goodwill Baptist Church here in Columbus, Ohio.
Good evening. My name is Helena J. Bush, and I'm the widow of Pastor Emeritus Leroy C. Bush, and I'm a member of Shallow Baptist Church, where Reverend Dr. Otha Giliard is my pastor.
Good evening. I'm Frieda Giliard. I'm a member of Shallow Baptist Church, and Dr. Otha Giliard is my husband and pastor.
Good evening. I'm Mary Edwards, and my church is Christ Memorial Missionary Baptist Church, where the Dr. Reverend Cedric L. Fowler is pastor, and my husband is Reginald Edwards.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Samples. I am a member of the Tabernacle Baptist Church, where my husband's pastor, Pastor Verlin Samples, Jr.
Good evening. My name is Victoria White. I'm a member of Tabernacle Baptist Church, where Pastor Sample is our pastor. My husband is deceased, and his name was Reverend James White.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to have you down this evening, and we're so happy to recognize your 80th anniversary. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues this evening?
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. I just want to say thank you for your service to this community. Certainly, recognizing that the work of a pastor, certainly, in caring for his church members, his congregation, is certainly not an easy task. I'm a deacon at my church, and so I recognize all the work that my bishop, Bishop Timothy Joseph Clark, has to do to take care of running our church and pastoring to the congregants. But I also recognize that he certainly couldn't do the work without my First Lady Sister C., and so I certainly have a real appreciation for a pastor's wife, because you not only are serving in your church, but you're also having to give of your, given of your spouse, your family, for them to serve. So thank you, may God continue to bless you in the work that you're doing in this community.
If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
I've also got to tell you that my husband was a former pastor at the Lutheran St. Baptist Church in Urbana, Ohio.
And that's all I have this evening. President Harden?
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. I have one resolution. It's Resolution Number 302X-2019. I'm going to ask Dr. Ann Conver Shelley, Elizabeth DeYoung, and Gina Wilt, I'm sorry, to come to the podium, please. And this resolution is to recognize November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Columbus, whereas Columbus City Council is dedicated to informing and helping people living with lung cancer, or people who are at risk for this disease. Whereas lung cancer takes more lives annually than breast, prostate, colon, and pancreatic cancers combined, making the research for early diagnostic tests all more important to help save lives. In fact, lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death and the second-most common cancer among both men and women in the United States. Whereas there is certainly no standard screening for lung cancer, and funding for lung cancer research falls far short of that for other forms of cancer, this year in Franklin County, over 700 people will be diagnosed with lung cancer, and nearly 600 people will die from the disease. Whereas each year, about 218,000 people in the United States are told they have lung cancer, and more than 150,000 people die from the disease. And moreover, in the United States, 7,200 people who have never, 7,300 people who have never smoked, died from lung cancer due to secondhand smoke exposure every year. Whereas different people have different symptoms for lung cancer, most people with lung cancer don't have symptoms until the cancer is advanced. Healthcare providers and state and local communities can play an important role in helping people to lower their lung cancer risk. And whereas 2/3 of the people who have never smoked and are diagnosed with lung cancer are women, moreover, who have never smoked are more than twice as likely to get lung cancer as men who have never smoked. Further, recent studies have indicated that the rate of people who have never smoked and contract lung cancer is increasing. Whereas a five-year survival rate for women with lung cancer remains at an all-time low, now therefore be it resolved by this council on the Sea of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize November of 2019 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Columbus. And moreover, this council encourages patients, physicians, and others become aware about the impact of effective risk reduction and treatment options for lung cancer, ultimately inspiring hope and achieving better healthcare outcomes. First of all, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Before I have the speaker say a few words, I just want to make sure that if you are having, think you're having any symptoms or concern, please call 1-800-LUNGEUSA and get involved with the American Lung Association's Lung Force Initiative in uniting women and their loved ones across this country to stand together against lung cancer, the number-one killer of women and men in the United States during this year's Lung Cancer Awareness Month. We have to raise awareness, and this is what this resolution is for. And now I'm going to ask Elizabeth DeYoung to speak at the podium.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I'm here because I am the new face of lung cancer. I was 47 years old when I was diagnosed with stage IV non-small cell lung cancer. I had no symptoms, and I had no risk factors. I never smoked. I was never around radon, asbestos, coal mines, anything like that. I had no idea that my body was being ravaged. When I was diagnosed, I had two tumors in my right femur, I had a tumor in my right lung, I had tumors in my right hilar lymph nodes, and I had a brain lesion. That was September of 2016. I hit the jackpot when it came to my lung cancer. Most lung cancer patients are non-small cell, that's about 70% of the lung cancer patients out there. Of those 70%, 3% to 3.5, well, I should say 3% to 5%, it's kind of up in the air right now, 3% to 5% of those have what is called an ALK-positive biomarker. That ALK-positive makes it possible for me to take a targeted therapy. So I take pills in the morning, pills in the evening, with limited side effects. I still work full-time, I travel, and I'm able to lead a strong and relatively healthy life. Unfortunately, what is common with these targeted therapies is that they all have an expiration date. My body will build an immunity to it, the cancer will become smart enough to work around it, and I will go on to hopefully the next line of treatment. I have one more targeted therapy after this one, and then I will go on to traditional chemotherapy regimes. To say that at 50, I'm hoping to live to 60, is an insult to lung cancer patients everywhere. There should be more hope than that, but there isn't right now. And so I'm hoping that by raising awareness, by sponsoring this resolution, we can help people understand we need more research, and we need people to be aware of their risk factors, and really, the biggest risk factor is having lungs. So I appreciate you sponsoring this so, so much, and I do hope that the next time you hear of somebody having lung cancer, your first inclination will not be to ask them when they smoked, or how much they smoked, but to ask them how they're doing today and how their treatment is going. Since my diagnosis, I've had progression twice, both times in my brain, and that is scary to hear. So I hope in my scans next week that I will not have progression again, but if I do, I know that people like you are standing behind me to help make a bigger, better future for all lung cancer patients. So thank you very much. Okay. Standing with me from the American Lung Association and my mother, so I'm not in this battle alone, by any means, but it is, sometimes it can feel very solitary. So thank you for standing with me.
First of all, thank you for coming and just sharing your story and raising awareness for our viewing and listening audience. for our viewing and listening audience. And I just, your story is a moving story and I know that you've, you know, the Baptist Women's First Ladies were just here, but I also know that God didn't put any more of us than we could actually bear. And I know that may not be, you know, the words that sometimes people want to hear, but I also recognize that, that your strength just shows through in such a significant way and that shows just hope. And we are sending our prayers to you and as you continue to move forward, but you certainly are just an amazing spokesperson to raise awareness about this disease.
Thank you.
And so I thank you for coming and sharing your story. I certainly appreciate your mom for talking, contacting us and your dad's here too.
Yes.
But your mom is such a strong advocate for you and you're right, you're not in it alone.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any comments from our elected officials, auditors, city attorneys, treasurer? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of any item or ordinance on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you now read into the record the ordinance of numbers of 30-day legislation?
Finance Committee, ordinance 2791 and 2800-2019. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 2716 and 2720-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2107-2735, 2766-2771-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance is 2665 and 2747-2019. And Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2673-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the thirty, on first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 300X, 301X, and 306X-2019. Finance Committee, ordinance is 2029, 2451, 2513, 2548, 2599, 2772, 2779, 2815, and 2821-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2619, 2621-2019. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 2539-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2383, 2400, 2521, 2556, 2581, 2590, 2605, 2668, 2682, 2688, and 2726-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance 2196-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2446, 2578, 2597, 2687, 2724, 2727, Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 2783, 2784, and 2806-2019. Administration Committee, ordinance is 2678, 2741-2019. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2711-2019. And we have appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0181, 182, 188, 189, and 191-2019.
Seeing no speakers, any question or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have approval of these items designated as consent? Please call the row.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Yes, with the exception of 2783-2019 and 2784-2019, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes. Consent agenda items are passed with the notice exceptions. Do not proceed with their second reading of 30-day entailed legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. The committee is chaired by President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
President Harden, tonight in finance, we have ordinance 2162-2019 to adopt the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan submission for community planning and development programs, including the 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan, the 2020 through 2024 Citizen Participation Plan, and the 2020 Annual Action Plan, to authorize the filing of the consolidated submission with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to declare an emergency. We held a public hearing on October 8th to review the 2020 Action Plan as well as the five-year Consolidated Plan and Citizen Participation Plan, co-chaired by my colleague, Councilmember Shayla Favor. These plans combine the public input, planning process, and application for four federal housing and urban development grants into a single document. The grants covered are the CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS or HAPWA. The grants are administered by the Departments of Development, Neighborhood, Rec and Parks, and Columbus Public Health. These grants are used to make important investments in Columbus neighborhoods focused on expanding housing and economic opportunities for low and moderate income families. I want to thank Councilmember Favor for her focus on these priorities as Chair of the Housing Committee. These federal dollars are a part of our work to increase access to affordable housing in Columbus, and I appreciate your leadership, Councilmember, on these issues and your sharp focus as we reviewed the plan. Examples of investments include development of affordable homeowner and rental housing, down payment assistance and rental payment assistance, infrastructure investments in streets and sidewalks, and after-school programming amongst others that we reviewed in-depth at our hearing. Part of the plan and the formulation of the five-year plan and the annual action plan is to engage the public. Therefore, excuse me if I can get my voice cleared here. Deputy Director Dan Gianardella, could you please talk to us a little bit more about public engagement in this process, which I know our finance department ran?
Yes, President Harden, Chair Brown, members of council. In addition, of course, to the public hearing that Chair Brown mentioned that we had here in council on October 8th, there were, in the spring of this year, specifically March 7th at Columbus Main Library, April 11th Northern Lights Library, May 1st at the Community Development for All People, there were three public meetings to seek input from the community on not just the plan, but also the action budget and anything they would like to put forward for our consideration. In addition to those meetings, there was a social media and print media outreach that was done as well. There was an online survey that was on our website on our finance and management. We had 1,200 responses to the online survey, which also helped us to formulate the 2024 year 2020 to 24 plan. And then, of course, the, the plan continues to be up on our website, which it has been since the end of September in draft form for anyone to also look at. So, and of course, at the public hearing that we had here beside the individuals that came forward, we also distributed and had available not only the, the website, but the phone number for our contact person and email for our grants coordinator. So, I appreciate council considering this ordinance this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2450-2019 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders with Upstate Wholesale Supply, doing business as Bright Computers, for the purchase of 44 Fujitsu Lifebook computers and necessary hardware and accessories to be installed in police interceptors in accordance with the terms and conditions of State of Ohio Cooperative Contracts, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contract with Upstate Wholesale Supply, doing business as Bright Computers, for the purchase of mobile computer mounting platforms and docking stations and other necessary hardware and accessories, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $182,572 from the Special Income Tax Fund. Competitive bidding is being waived from the purchase of these computers because Upstate Wholesale Supply is the sole provider of the mobile computer mounting platforms and docking stations utilized by Columbus Police. As stated in the title, we are also taking advantage of the terms and conditions in the State of Ohio Cooperative Contract with Upstate Wholesale Supply. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2761-2019 to amend the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with RW Sederland Building Company for the demolition and replacement of the Roberts Road outpost for the Public Service Department, to authorize the transfer of $11,156,970.50 within the Street and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $11,156,970.50 from the Street and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. RW Sederland Building Company was selected through the competitive bidding process as the lowest responsible bidder for the demolition of the current facility and construction of a new public service outpost at Roberts Road. They received preference as a local company to match the lowest bid from a non-local company, which they chose to do. Funds for this project were budgeted within the Street and Highways Bond Fund. Emergency action is being considered in order to begin construction as soon as possible. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, in finance, we have ordinance 2832-2019 to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $12,513,956 within the general fund, to transfer appropriations between objects in certain non-general fund departments and divisions, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate additional funds in that health operating fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate additional funds in the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate additional funds in the Public Construction Inspection Fund, and to declare an emergency. As part of the 2019 third quarter financial review, the Department of Finance and Management identified surpluses and deficits in various object classes in several city divisions. It is necessary to transfer the dollars identified in this ordinance within the general fund in order to properly align appropriations with projected expenditures. This allows these divisions to operate without interruption through the end of 2019. This routine adjustment happens each year after the third quarter review. Questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to Recreation and Parks, Council President? We have ordinance 2554-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Adidas Golf for the purchase of merchandise for the airport golf course and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, 329. Last year, the Golf Division assumed the operation of the airport golf courses Pro Shop and is now responsible for purchasing the inventory and supplies. Competitive bidding provisions are being waived to secure the lowest price for these products through discounts on wholesale pricing directly from Adidas Golf. The sale of these products at the Pro Shop provides revenue for the Recreation and Parks Department that goes towards sustaining their operations. Are there questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in my committees. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have ordinance 2549-2019 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $80,000 within the Division of Fire's general fund budget from the transfer line item to materials and supplies for the purchase of recruit training materials, uniforms, and turnout gear, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to associate general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement. On behalf of the Division of Fire, for the purchase of fire uniforms from Galls LLC and turnout gear from Lion First Responder PPE, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $550,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Assistant Director Stewart to speak to the value and importance of providing replacement gear for our firefighters.
Yes, President Harden, President Pro Tim Brown, Chair Brown. The uniforms and turnout gear will outfit fire recruits slated for December of 2019 as well as provide replacement equipment for current division personnel. With the evolution of cancer-causing agents often faced in fires, turnout gear has been optimized to improve the physical barriers between the fire and first responders, covering the majority of the first responder's body. Additionally, moreover, emphasis has been put on gear contamination, decontamination, and cleaning, and the role of turnout gear plays in carcinogen, carcinogen, health hazard exposures. Our Division of Fire turnout gear is cleaned, repaired, and inspected after every use. It is during these inspections that it is determined that the gear needs, if the gear needs to be replaced in order to provide optimum safety. It is for these reasons the Department of Public Safety is requesting the funding of replacement gear.
If there are no additional questions, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. First, I have ordinance number 2211-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with Groundworks OBA LLC, doing business as Ohio Business Authority for the volunteer sub-pump program Blueprint Hilltop One, Phase One Project, to authorize the transfer within an expenditure of up to $1,969,063.83 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize the transfer within an expenditure of up to $2,000 for prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service, and to amend the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Older homes, many of which are in the hilltop, were built before subpumps were commonly used to direct rainwater away from foundations. In homes built before the 1960s, the foundation directly connects to the sanitary sewer. The goal of the Blueprint Columbus is to keep rainwater out of the sanitary sewer system so it will not, no longer fill up beyond its capacity to overflow into rivers or back up into basements. A voluntary supplement program is one of the strategies necessary to achieve this goal and will bring participating homes up to current building standards. Residents with a single-family or duplex home that do not currently have a sub-pump can apply for the program if the home is located within an area where the city is implementing Blueprint Columbus. The city will determine eligibility after investigating whether a sub-pump will be a cost-effective application. I would encourage anyone interested in checking their eligibility to visit columbus.gov/blueprint for more information. I'm also planning on posting a link to that program on my Facebook account this evening for more information. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 2214-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering and services agreement with Arcadis US, Inc., for the sewer system capacity model upgrade 2020, to authorize the transfer within and an expenditure of up to $1,773,996.16 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize an amendment to the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. The Model, the Model Update 2020 Project is the principal tool used to manage the planning and operations of the city sewer collection system. Enhancement of this tool is vital to minimizing sewer overflows and backups and thereby minimizing negative impacts in the environment caused by the city sewer system and trust compliance with the Ohio Environmental Agency's consent orders. This construct is also a major component of cities, of the city Blueprint Columbus Integrated Plan Program. If there are any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 2566-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Underground Utilities, Inc., for the South Broadley Area Waterline Improvement Project in an amount of up to $4,775,376.60 to encumber funds within the Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division for inspection, material testing, prevailing wage, and related services in an amount of up to $559,705.63 to authorize the appropriation and transfer of up to $4,775,376.60 from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $4,775,376.60 expenditure of $4,775,376.60 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund Account Fund, to authorize a transfer and expenditure within the General Obligation Fund, a voted bond fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2019 capital improvement budgets. Bit of a mouthful. The South Broadley Area Waterline Improvements Project is part of the Division of Water's Replacement and Rehabilitation Program. The construction for this project will take place in the Mideast community area, in the Berwick and Berwyn neighborhood, and those between Beck's Lane and Whitehall. The goal of the project is to replace existing waterline mains that have a high break frequency with new pipes, which will improve water service and decrease the burden on water maintenance operation and reduce water losses. The existing water mains being replaced range from age of 64 to 90 years and are cast iron. More than 16,000 linear feet of water line will be replaced. Fire hydrant replacement and customer's water service transfers will also be part of the project, and construction is expected to begin at the start of 2020. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 2631-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with Sand Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for the Parsons Avenue Water Treatment Plant Residuals Disposal Improvements Project, to authorize a transfer and expenditure of up to $1,575,000 within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund for the Division of Water and to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget. The Parsons Avenue Water Plant is an essential and integral component to the Columbus area water supply and treatment infrastructure. We all know that having a safe supply of water is essential to economic growth and our continued development as a city. This project is necessary to upgrade the plant's pumping system and infrastructure that benefits the entire city. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Last but not least, we have ordinance number 2666-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew the contract with Roberts Service Group for the Electric Power Systems Maintenance Services, the Division of Sewer and Drainage, and the Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of $400,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund and $600,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. The work to be performed under these specifications will be electric power distribution systems and their components that require studies performed, inspection, testing, maintenance, and repair and/or replacement, with the majority of the work to be on industrial equipment systems ranging from 120 volts to 15.5 kilovolts, which is quite a bit. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Those are all the mouthfuls I have this evening, President Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the Housing Committee, we have ordinance number 2715-2019 to authorize the City of Columbus Department of Development to accept and execute a reimbursable grant of $5.6 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to authorize the appropriation of $5,492,634.66 and expenditure of $3,140,709.66 by the Director of the Department of Development, to authorize the appropriation of $121,475 by the Health Commissioner of Columbus Public Health, to authorize the expenditure of all funds, of all the funds affected date of this grant, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Housing Preservation Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Government Build America Bonds Fund, to authorize the transfer within the Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from a combination of the Housing Preservation Fund, Government Build America Bonds, and the Northland Other Acquisitions Fund, and to declare an emergency. I think I got you, Councilmember Dorans. This ordinance allows the Department of Development to accept a grant from the Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration Program with the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Earlier this afternoon, just before council, I was able to participate in the check presentation event along with Mayor Ginther, the Department of Development, and HUD officials. This work to reduce lead poisoning and other health hazards in the homes of Columbus residents is critical. This grant will allow the city to address hazards in 300 housing units, provide safer homes for low and very low-income families with children. The city will also perform healthy homes assessments in 201 units and work with other medical and social service providers. Director Stevens, do you have any additional comments?
I do not, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final committee we have for council is... Councilmember, while we're still in your committee, would you like to call up a speaker on...
My apologies. There was a speaker on for this specific ordinance, Mr. Nathaniel Wickens.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the resident of Norah Flinders. I'm in all for this, but I do think that it needs to be more money. I know we talk about safer neighborhoods and things, and I would love to see more money idolized to safer homes and older homes. I really suggest a $9.817,209.97. So again, I'm all for more money to clean up the land base and older homes was built before 1978. That does not do the Columbus, Ohio area but all parts of the neighborhood of Columbus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your comments. I will reiterate that we did have a few HUD officials, and this was a very competitive grant for Columbus to receive. So, round of applause definitely to the administration and all those who worked to secure that, and they encouraged us to spend this money fast and apply again. So, hopefully, we can meet Mr. Wilkins' request. So with that, I will... Do I need to do it again?
Oh, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Final committee to come before council is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that, but I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have ordinance number 2642-2019 to amend Section 3381.12 of the Columbus Zoning Code, Title 33, to change the scope of the work, to change the scope of work that limited sign erectors can perform. I'm going to ask Michael Bowen from Building and Zoning Services to address this ordinance.
Good evening, President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council. This ordinance just seeks to clean up some language pertaining to the types of signs that can be installed, maintained, and removed by contractors holding the sign-rector limited license. Currently, limited sign-rectors can only install and maintain painted and non-illuminated graphics of up to 64 feet or square feet. If approved, this ordinance will permit limited sign-rectors to install and maintain any type of sign or graphic, that is, 64 square feet or smaller. We found that the reference to painted graphics is a bit outdated and that some technology improvements in illuminated graphics have made installation and maintenance easier than ever. So we believe that this ordinance will be a positive for the industry, both consumers and practitioners, by making the limited sign-rector license a little more flexible while not impacting or reducing quality and safety. So with that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. A public hearing was held before the Columbus Development Commission on September 12 of 2019, whereupon they voted to recommend this proposed code change be forwarded to Columbus City Council for adoption. If there are no questions or comments from our colleagues, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Regular meeting, number 54 will now come to order. Would the clerk please call the row?
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal?
The move.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, and all members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speakers before council on variances, on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will. Thank you. So the first ordinance is 2471-2019. It is to amend ordinance number 3331-2018, passed December 10 of 2018, for property located at 5721 Cherry Bottom Row, to add a commitment to a site plan that was inadvertently omitted. The, again, this is an ordinance amendment. It adds Section 5 pertaining to site plan and commitments. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is disapproval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2700-2019 to rezone 6514 Hayden Run Road, being 3.4 acres located on the north side of Hayden Run Road, 230 feet south of Hayden Run Boulevard, from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District, and to amend ordinance numbers 08884-2019, passed April 15 of 2019, for property located at 2695 Holt Road by repealing Section 2 and replacing it with a new Section 2 to correct the height district for the I Institutional District. The applicant is Hayden Development LLC, care of Jeffrey L. Brown. The proposed use is a commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and Hayden Run Civic Association's recommendation is approval 4 to 0. If there are no speakers and there are no comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2742-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03, C4 permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 4416 Refugee Road, to permit a self-storage facility in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is AmeriCo Real Estate Company, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a self-storage facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Southeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval 8 to 1. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2748-2019 to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections 3370.05 permitted uses and 3312.29 parking space of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 279 East 5th Avenue, and to permit a fitness center with reduced parking space in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is RM McFadden Holdings Limited, care of Attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a fitness center. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in zoning this evening is 2765-2019 to grant a variance from provisions of Sections 3333.02, AR12, ARLD, and AR1 Apartment Residential District, 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05 vision clearance, 3333.18 building lines, 3333.23 minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1236 Oak Street, to permit eating and drinking establishment, general office, and farmer's market uses with reduced development standards in the ARLD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is William A. Silva. The proposed use is an eating, drinking establishment, general office, and farmer's market. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval 10 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business for the zoning committee, may I get a motion for adjournment? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
There will be no meeting on November 11. We will see you on November 18.